Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We're gonna get started. Two of the commissioners are out, and I understand that Commissioner Lambert is running a bit behind schedule, so, again, out of respect for everyone's calendar, I want to go ahead and get started. Before I do, I do need to make an introduction. A new member of our team, Ann Rosenthal. Ann? Ann is our Grants Program Strategist. That's just a long fancy title, saying she's our point person for all things grants, particularly coming out of the federal government. I thought it was important, considering how much monies are being, or coming out of DC, whether it's for infrastructure or other programs, I thought it was important that we have a full-time employee who bird dogs that money. My goal is that there should be no other municipality in the county that gets more money than West Palm Beach. So, Ann, no pressure on you, but...
It's pressure on me.
She fully understands. That is, that is our objective. But again, commissioners, I think it was just important that we had a full-time person who is overseeing that effort. So, welcome, Ann, to the team. Welcome. Okay, Ms. Johnson, do you want to tee up today's discussion, please?
Yes. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So, the first item on the agenda relates to two of the priority projects within the updated FY '22, '23 strategic plan. And the reason that this was brought forward for discussion and clarification from the board is that if you reflect back to November at the Gaines Park session when we updated the strategic plan, the board identified the strategic initiatives and then priority projects, and indicated that the intent of identifying priority projects was to have those projects actually completed within the two-year timeframe. So, taking that direction, the department directors and myself and the two Assistant City Administrators, we have had one meeting to go through the priority projects and get an update on the status of the progress. And in doing that, we identified challenges with two of the projects that need to either be better defined, or we need to talk about what is the board's intent. Because as we discuss them, we think that there are some challenges that are going to prevent us from being able to actually complete those two projects within the two-year timeframe. And I didn't want to wait to get to the end of that period and then inform the board. So, as we look at, and the two projects relate to Pillar Four under Education, Economy, and Jobs. Sometimes it's hard to see from the screen, so I provided hard copies for the mayor and the commissioners. But if you look at project, Priority Project Two, it states, "Develop a revitalization plan for business development along Okeechobee and Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard." I had Assistant City Administrator Amanda Fana to follow up with the commissioners that brought forward that project, and in this case, it was Commissioner Warren. What was, the feedback that I got was that we were looking at redevelopment along the north side of Okeechobee, just west of Palm Beach Lakes, and then along Palm Beach Lakes itself, from Okeechobee to I-95. The challenge with this priority project is that, when you think about that strip, it is highly commercialized. There are two zoning designation, commercial plan development and general commercial. And the private sector usually determines what's gonna happen in terms of the few vacant buildings there. So, I need the board to have a discussion on, what exactly are you looking for staff to do as it relates to the couple of vacant buildings there that would be redevelopment opportunities? Because typically, the city doesn't drive the redevelopment of a privately-owned building or privately-owned vacant lot. And we don't have a city-owned building along that strip, nor do we have a city-owned vacant lot. So, therein lies the challenge when we try to determine, what is it that staff is to do with the redevelopment of that area? And we do, I put, we put hard copies of the map as well. We can pull it up, Mayor, if you want, on the screen. But again, there are two zoning designations there. And as you know from, everyone knows from riding that area, I mean, it's pretty developed. There are a couple of spots that still need some development, and of course, they can always be redeveloped. But the private sector usually drives that.
Well, I'd like to hear from the commissioner as to what her thinking was when she proposed this. So, Commissioner Warren, do you want to tell us what you, what you had in mind?
Yes, thank you very much. As I've looked at the tremendous growth that we've experienced, and, can you, yeah. As I've looked at the tremendous growth that we've experienced in our downtown area, recognizing that Palm Beach Lakes and Okeechobee Boulevard were at once very vibrant and thriving and attractive business locations, I was hoping to see that there would be something that we could do to spur more development or people coming back into that area to continue to do business, to expand their businesses, to do things that would feed into the community outside of downtown, feeding into the retail and commercial needs of people outside of our downtown area.
Okay, and I think that's...
When you said things that we could do to spur it, I mean, what did you have in mind? Because again, this is privately-owned property, so what did you have in mind in terms of specifics?
It is. I was looking to see if there were any type of incentive ideas or ways that we would be able to be attractive in that area. But I'm understanding that what you're saying is that it's primarily focused on individual businesses and not something that is initiated by the city.
Yeah, because it's not city on land. Ms. Johnson?
When you say provide incentives, I guess you mean in terms of the economic development incentives that we provide? You know, if we have a company coming in and we want to incentivize that area?
Yes, ma'am.
Then I think that would then fall under the general economic development, because it's not within a CRA area, so it wouldn't be eligible for any of the incentives under CRA. But in terms of the economic development incentives, I think those are citywide for business who would be eligible for it. So, if that's the clarification, but I'll let you and the mayor have the rest of that discussion.
And those incentives are usually based upon request from the private sector to the city. They have a particular plan, whether it's to build new commercial office space. They're gonna bring in so many jobs. And so, they want, you know, we have a grant that's based upon job development, and they make certain commitments. Or we have a building improvement grant. But again, these are things that the private sector is coming to the city to say that they would like, and these are their plans. So, that, those are driven by the plans of the private sector, as opposed to what's just, I mean, the programs are there. And so, if someone sees the programs and thinks that's enough to spur them to do a particular project, that's fine, but we have those programs available. And I don't know what else we can do to, you know, entice the private sector to do something that they might not otherwise be interested in.
No, that's sufficient, thank you.
Then I need discussion and direction on what the board wants done with this particular priority project. Do we want to just remove it from the strategic plan or have an understanding that it stays in, but it's not, you know, a project that the staff will or can work on?
Well, again, this is, these are instructions, not instructions. This is direction to staff.
Exactly.
Correct? So, it's your suggestion, Commissioner Warren, but my thought is, there's nothing staff can really do at this point to further that particular objective. Now, if you have different thoughts, Commissioner Warren, I'm certainly willing to, or we as a body are willing to listen to them.
No, I don't have any additional thoughts of there's nothing that we can do internally to encourage this or, as was stated, we don't own any of the property there. And I was not recommending that we have any type of CRA incentives. I was certainly looking at the business development or economic development. However, with in mind the things that we've discussed this morning, I think that this item can be removed from the strategic plan. Because there's no way to, to actually bring it to fruition.
Yes, and I mentioned the CRA because we have this being televised so that, you know, whomever's watching it can understand that this area is outside of the CRA and would not be eligible for any incentives with, that the CRA offers.
Okay, well, unless, Commissioner Fox, you feel differently, the other commissioners aren't here. All right, so let's take it off. Okay, there seems to be consensus removing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The third priority project was initiated by Commissioner Lambert, Mayor. So, if we can just pin this, and when the commissioner comes in at whatever point, we can come back to it.
That's fine. Let's proceed with the other part of the agenda.
Thank you very much. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to, or move on, rather, to item two. And before we get into the presentation, we do have an update that I would like the city attorney to provide to the board. In that, if you reflect back at a couple of city commission meetings, we had some comments put into the public record regarding the fire assessment issue in Ocala and money having to be paid back. And so, I want to give the board the confident level that there is no issue with how the city set up its fire assessment fund. It was legally done, but the city attorney will walk you all through the differences between the two so that we can then get to the presentation by the CFO.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I just want to, generally speaking, there are three different ways that municipalities can generate revenues, and they're through various fees. Each fee has specific lawful requirements that you must meet in order to make those fees lawful. There are regulatory and user fees, there are impact fees, and there are special assessment fees. In the city of West Palm Beach, our fire fee is a special assessment fee. And all of the work that was done to put that fee in place meets the lawful requirements that are put forth in the courts as to what makes a special assessment. In the case of the city of Ocala, Ocala imposed their fee under a user fee method. The court found in that case that the user fee that they did did not meet the lawful requirements for a user fee. There are two different types of fees, two different types of tests. So, the cities, this city of Ocala case has no bearing or impact on the city's special assessment fee. Those fees remain lawful in the state of Florida by the Supreme Court if you meet the requirements of imposing them and then for the appropriate use of the fees.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners? Thank you very much, Madam City Attorney.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. We are here to continue the conversation.
Just make sure you identify yourself for the record. You probably need to speak a little bit closer to the mic as well.
Sorry, I apologize. Bridgette Soufrant, Chief Financial Officer for the city. We are here to discuss the fire assessment fee and the fire assessment fee fund. As a brief overview, in 2008, the city commission adopted an ordinance that established this annual fee for fire service as a special assessment. This special assessment funds a portion of our fire services. Please note that it excludes anything EMS-related. Ordinance 4141-08 lays out the items that this fire assessment fee can be utilized for. Because this is straight from the ordinance, I will cover briefly. Any type of capital purchase as it relates to your building, your facility, or even land purchase for existing or new stations, any type of infrastructure upgrade to those facilities are allowed. As you look at your typical essential services, our personnel, our benefits, your salaries, your uniforms, travel training, those traditional items that you see within our fire budget and fire service is allowed through the city ordinance. A special assessment is a charge that is placed against specific property, so your real property within the city, because that property is receiving a benefit from that special assessment. That's where special assessments are different than your general property taxes, which are based on the value of the property. That special assessment is saying this property is specifically benefiting, and thus, we are charging for that. Having this fire assessment fee, we are allowed to provide a comprehensive fire service, a service that includes fire suppression, fire prevention, as well as other integral components for fire service. This is a benefit to your homeowner. It is saying that we are protecting the value and the integrity of your home on your property. It also positively affects their fire insurance component in their homeowner's insurance, and just has a positive market perception that with this fire assessment fee, you are guaranteed to have that protection through your property in the city of West Palm Beach. On July 11th, we brought forward the tentative fire assessment fee for budget year FY '23. That has remained the same from FY '22. In fact, it's been the same rates since fiscal year 2020. So, we brought forward those preliminary rates on July 11th, and it was voted to move forward with these rates on August 22nd. We utilized those rates to create the proposed FY '23 fire assessment budget, which is in its own special fund, also known as the Fire Assessment Fund. Here you have your FY '22 adopted budget compared to the proposed '23. Revenue sources, there are four basic revenues that come into the fund. You may notice the slight increase in the fire assessment fee line item that is a result of the development that's occurring throughout the city. So, even though the rate has stayed the same, there's more properties that are getting the assessment on their special assessment with the tax bill. As we noted in discussing the ordinance, this budget looks very similar to our other budgets where you have your typical components of personnel, materials, the internal service charge for various insurances and technology, transfer out, which is for debt service or capital, and then a reserve for capital outlay. Diving just a little bit deeper on the expenditures in the proposed budget, we have nine firefighters in the fire assessment fee fund, as well as five equipment maintenance staff. And, and that, and that includes an assistant fire chief, some standard materials and services, travel training, transfers out for debt service, which in FY '23, we had a significant amount of debt service be relieved, so you saw that line item reduced. And then we have a reserve for capital in the FY '23 budget to assist us in funding for some of the bunker gear and the equipment at Fire Station Eight. Next steps are the final budget meetings, where we have on September 8th, the first public hearing for the tentative FY '23 budget and mill rate and September 22nd, where we are hoping that we will have the final public hearing and adoption of the FY '23 budget. Any questions on the fire assessment fee fund?
Very good. Thank you for that presentation. Any questions, commissioners? President Fox?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I was curious, just looking at the slide where, sorry, I mentioned, it doesn't have a, it's, I think it's page seven. And it talks about the carryforward balance from fiscal year '22, but I'm just curious if we don't, we won't have a carryforward going forward, or we just don't know what it would be yet?
So, this looks like it was a strategic budget for that carryforward. Kyle, I don't know if you have any background on that from FY '22.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. Kyle Roberts, Budget Manager with the city. The carryforward was built into the FY '22 budget to adopt funds for existing projects that had already been in progress. For example, it would have been towards the fire station doors and roof repairs that had already been obligated projects, and we were just building that into adopted budget. So, the funds would be available to move forward on 10-1. We don't have any adopted carryforward this year for any ongoing projects.
Thank you.
Good answer to your question?
Yes.
President? Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you for that presentation.
Mayor, if, if I could...
Oh, absolutely.
Would make a footnote that we have dialed into the reserves, you know, the bunker gear and the trucks for Fire Station Eight. We are still waiting to hear from FEMA on our application for the SAFER grant, where we have applied for 13 firefighters, and we are hopeful that we will get them, and then Station Eight would be fully staffed. But Chief Matty is here if you have any detailed questions on the application or that process. But we're still hopeful that by the time the board adopts the budget in September at the second hearing, that we would have heard good news from FEMA, and that budget would include the 13 firefighters for Station Eight, and we'll move forward with fully staffing Station Eight.
Well, fingers crossed.
Yes.
Chief Matty, you have anything to add to that with respect to scheduling?
Certainly. It's on. Okay. So, Chief Matty, West Palm Beach Fire Department, thank you for, thank you for your hopeful thoughts, Ms. Johnson. Just one minor correction, it is for 15 firefighters for that grant. But we have been very fortunate to this point with, with our grant applications. I know that they had a lot of backlog because of different natural disasters. FEMA staff switches gears when that happens, so I know that they do have some backlogs, but we remain very hopeful. No one else has received one yet, so that's another good note. So, it's not like we've taken second fiddle to anyone, so.
Very good, very good. Thank you. Any questions for Chief Matty? Okay, thank you very much for that presentation.
What's your pleasure? You want to go back to strategic?
Yeah, let's go back now that Commissioner Lambert is here. And let's address the South End, strategic priority.
Good morning, Commissioner Lambert.
Good morning. My apologies for being late.
Okay. We defer the discussion, I'm sorry. We defer the discussion on the priority project related to South Dixie until you got here, because this was one of the priority projects that were led, the discussion was led by you in the strategic planning back in November. And as the staff is now working on the priority projects, we realized that we needed some clarification on the intent you had in mind for this particular project so that we make certain that we carried it out as intended. The feedback that I got from Assistant City Administrator Amanda Fana, who followed up with you on it, was that you were looking in general for beautification, you know, to be done along the South Dixie corridor. That would include decorative lighting, crosswalk improvements, and then certainly economic development, which that would be driven by the private sector. I wanted to have this discussion to vet through that specific beautification plan that you would like to see, and to also point out that because South Dixie is a DOT road, we have to coordinate with them. And to the extent that we can accomplish that coordination, we may or may not be able to accomplish that within the two-year period. And the board was clear that the priority projects were to be completed. So, I wanted the board to have that understanding. And then also, if we're looking at decorative lighting and crosswalk improvements, we have to identify funding. Given that the general fund budget is baked for FY '23, we will be looking potentially at if there are grants to be identified or if we have additional revenue that comes in. And then certainly, we can look at one-time funding, which the board will have a discussion about that come Wednesday. So, we just need to be clear that we have funding direction that we would need, and then the coordination with DOT, which potentially, more than likely, will affect the timing of our ability to complete this within the two-year period that the board set.
Thank you. No, I certainly appreciate that. And just if I could elaborate a little bit more on it, and for those who might not travel that road every day, there are a number of small local businesses that have opened up shop along South Dixie. There are many that are established along that area. The Hive area is wonderful if you haven't been yet. Antique Row is beautiful and well-established. But consistently, and I mean, you know, weekly, I am hearing concerns from not only the business owners, but from residents and visitors saying how safe it, unsafe it is to be a pedestrian on those roads. And there is some on-street parking that, unfortunately, there's four lanes of traffic that I believe the speed limit there is 35 miles an hour, but it's just an open highway. And so, there's just a lot of speeding that goes on. And if, I'm sure if any of you travel that area and you just happen to glance down at your speedometer, you'll see you're probably going much faster than that. It's just, it's just the speed in which the vehicles travel there. So, the crosswalks, lights, anything we can do to help with that situation would be great. I know that the police and the, the traffic lieutenant has met with us, with residents, and with business owners many times, trying to find ways to provide solutions there. And, you know, I've, I've heard from business owners who have opened and had to close in that area because pedestrians don't feel comfortable walking there. And so, if this is an area that we're trying to make sure that falls under the economy and is fruitful for everybody, I think that this is, should maintain a priority. And so, I do hope that we can find some funding for this.
As I look at the language, did you want the plan completed within two years? You want the actual work done within two years? This, this says create a plan.
I would love it if, I mean, let's start with a plan, and let's start from there. I mean, of course, whatever we can get done would be great, but, you know, of course, we need to start with a plan.
I mean, because I know that there had been some discussion, and I think it was led by the TPA, about the redesign of South Dixie. I think FDOT was on board, then they pulled it. Do you know anything about that?
Correct.
Where that is?
Correct, yes. So, that, my understanding was a Florida Department of Transportation plan, and that that came from the residents and the business owners in that area. Unfortunately, I think what happened was the timing took an extremely long time from the initial saying, hey, this is what we want to do, to when it came to fruition. And so, things had changed. And unfortunately, the plan that they proposed was not what would meet the needs of that community. And so, it took a long time. I get it that this is a FDOT road, and so, we're limited by what we can do here. But maybe there are some other, other beautification or traffic calming measures that we can implement that, that we have control over. I'm not, I'm not sure about those details, but...
Kevin, I saw you approaching the desk. Do you have something to?
Yeah, I mean, you, you kind of hit the nail on the head there, Commissioner Lambert. There were some challenges with trying to do what we were originally intending to do with FDOT. And it was because of a lot of the public involvement on that original project that FDOT decided not to go forward with that. So, you know, we basically would be starting over again. But I think, you know, we should start a dialogue with our FDOT counterparts to try to work out something that we could do to try to make some sort of safety improvements there, what those could be. You know, it is, it is kind of a challenge to be able to cross that street without a signal light, and I recognize that. And sometimes, working with FDOT, that poses a challenge in itself. But we will certainly make an effort to initiate that dialogue with them and see what we can come up with, you know, in the next several months to be able to at least get a plan to put together for that.
Thank you. And I think that the other thing that goes hand in hand with this is parking. And I know Assistant Administrator Amanda Fana, I don't see him in here, has been telling me that he's been talking with the county, and that we've been able to possibly secure some parking lots or some shared spaces through the county in this area. And I think that that's, you know, a big piece of this as well, because I don't know how long ago, four years ago, we did a parking study in this area, but I don't know that anything ever came of that.
Ms. Fana is at a board meeting, so that's why he's not here. He has been and is continuing to be in discussion with the county. My understanding is that the county has agreed to 10 parking spaces. I don't have the specific location of those parking spaces. I don't have the specific location of those parking spaces. That discussion is continuing in that there is an obvious need for more, but that's an ongoing discussion. Uh, and then in terms of the parking study, uh, that was looked at some years back, I do have an update on that. It has not yet been implemented, but I will get that update. I know that's on my, uh, on my desk rather.
Thank you. I just, I know that there's some, some great businesses and um, organizations along South Dixie from the Norton to the new golf course, to uh, the Green School that's doing a ton of expansion in that area, some great restaurants. It's just, it, this is a, you know, a great subsection of our city and I would just like for it to be reflective of, of the pride that we have in our city, so thank you.
Let me ask a question, Ms. Johnson. The, the two-year period, when does that end? The, the two-year that was discussed here?
November of twenty twenty-four.
November twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
All right. So Commissioner, would it help if uh, we proceeded along the path that Mr. Valbrecht suggested that uh, the, the discussions began uh, with FDOT to see if there are at least some safety measures that could be implemented and um, um, that we'll follow up with the county on, on the parking, get you an update on the, on the, on the parking study. But, I mean, would that be sufficient? And I don't know how, we don't know what's going to come out of the discussions with FDOT, so I don't know if we could commit to more than that because it is their road. Uh, uh, now you mentioned um, traffic calming, um, perhaps Mr. Valbrecht, you could talk about, I don't know if we could do traffic calming on an FDOT road without FDOT's permission, right?
Well, because of the, uh, the type of road that is, I mean, it's not like we can put speed humps or anything on Dixie Highway, but um, there's, there's things that we can look at doing and, and we'll, we'll, you know, lift up every cushion on the couch and see if we could find some ideas that we can try to implement, you know, with their consensus and with their, with their uh, input on what we can potentially do, so.
Well, for example, uh, in the Antique Row area, there is a crosswalk and it does have flashing lights, but when somebody's going probably fifty-five miles an hour and I don't think that that's an overreach, it is very scary to walk out there with the, just praying that these cars are going to stop. Um, and so, you know, I don't know that, I know sometimes we talk about other traffic calming measures, like sometimes when trees are nearby, it kind of creates a slower environment. Um, you know, if, if there's other measures besides, of course, than not putting speed humps on South Dixie.
Well, you know, there's, there's other types of uh, flashing devices. There's like what they call a HAWK, which is an overhead flashing light that goes at crosswalks that maybe we could potentially try to implement something like that. There's, there's a number of things that we might be able to do. I can't tell you what they are at this very second, but we will certainly look into everything that we could do and, and, and uh, you know, we'll follow up with that.
Thank you. And then I would be remiss if I didn't mention also in this area is the Latin Quarter and I know that they have um, with the, the South Side Business Association been working on making sure that the administration is aware of their requests for um, beautification and they've talked about, I guess, and I, maybe this happened a decade ago, where we started implementing these kind of decorative lamps that show that this is a special historic district, but it started and then stopped. So there, it's in some areas that it's not and I, I think if the city is willing to look at those again, that, you know, they'd be willing to say, hey, what can we do to help be a partner in this as well?
Um, do we know, and Ms. Johnson, I know you weren't here ten years ago, I don't know if anyone in here was, I guess I was. Anyway, um, let, let's at least see if we could find out what happened with that particular program, uh, the decorative lamps uh, program, see where that is, where it was, and what the disconnect might be and perhaps report back to the commission at some point prior to the, the two-year.
I, I will do that, Mayor, but just from the feedback I got from uh, Ms. Fana was that that dated back to two thousand thirteen. It started and it stopped and I think primarily the funding didn't continue, but I'll get the specifics and then send an email out, but generally.
So in terms of direction for staff, I, I think I've heard some specific things. One is that we'll have staff communicate, the appropriate staff communicate with the appropriate staff at FDOT uh, to discuss uh, how we might slow the street down, some safety measures, et cetera. Um, we'll have discussions or continued discussions with the county on whatever parking solutions might be mutually acceptable. And third, um, at, at least report back to the commission on the status of the parking study, so we know where that is. And then fourth, uh, report back to the commission on this decorative lamp plan. So I think with those four things, that we might at least begin working toward a plan. But Commissioner, this is your item, so does that?
That's a great summary. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Okay.
And I, and I agree. I think that, you know, those actions will help us to work towards a plan, which then we would need to find out if we have the funding for and be able to move forward on or not, so thank you.
So that would show sufficient progress if we got that done?
For me it would, yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Does that give you enough direction, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you. Next item. Oh, I'm sorry, President Fox, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Before we leave this item, I was just curious, thank you so much for bringing this to us for the clarification. I'm just curious about what we should expect for the other priority projects, not just on this pillar, but the others. I mean, I know, for example, we all know about the anchor site moving forward, but the first priority um, on this list, talking about trade programs, vocational education, and then I know obviously there are other pillars. I'm just curious if we will be having updates just as things move forward on all the pillars or what we should expect?
The, uh, thank you, President Fox. The intent is to give the board uh, annual updates, you know, on the progress of these projects, given that the strategic planning session was in November, that is the intent, but certainly uh, if the board wants to have updates, you know, uh, sooner than a one-year period, uh, we can do that. Uh, we can just uh, plan for a work session where we do an update on the progress of all of the projects, which at this point will probably would be in November at the very earliest. Uh, but uh, if you all want to have updates on a certain schedule, uh, we can do that as well.
I think the November timeframe is fine. I mean, is there, I, I see some heads nodding. Yeah, Commissioner Lambert?
I, I, I know that a tremendous amount of work goes into providing those updates, so I, I would think an annual update is, is great as long as we know that that's happening. And maybe a mid-year, if it could just be via email or something um, delivered to our offices, just on paper of what's, what the progress is, if you're using a, a flow chart of what's started, in progress, completed, or being tabled, or, you know, just so that we kind of get an idea before the whole year is over.
Will do.
Thank you.
Good. Did that answer your question, President?
Yes, I was just looking more for um, clarification, like what you just provided, too. Thank you very much.
Very good.
But in addition to those updates, now when a uh, project comes before the board and it relates to a strategic plan, and we will point that out as well, so you will see incrementally updates on various projects as is appropriate.
Okay, very good. Any other questions on this item? Okay, hearing none, uh, we'll move to item number three, capital improvement program. Uh, Ms. Johnson, do you want to tee this up or we're going straight to Mr. Valbrecht?
Uh, we're going to go straight to Mr. Valbrecht.
Okay, very good.
As soon as I can get this thing to come up on this. It's not opening at all. Do you have the jump drive? Yeah. Who's IT? What's IT stating, you know?
Guess they left.
Smell somebody's coffee, it smells so good. Wow. Right there at the top. Oh. Seems as a shortcut. It's not, see, that is your actual.
Do we need to get IT down there?
We shouldn't.
I can tell you when we had staff here at about nine-thirty, everything was perfect without a hitch, so I think the glitch is now having the audience.
Oh, really?
Certain audience around the table.
It's our fault.
I'm not identifying whose fault, but however you interpret it, it's correct.
Okay, all right, all right.
Okay, hopefully this is going to work.
By the way, that comment came from the audience.
But it was not the audience around this table.
Interdepartmental uh, cooperation. Thank you so much, Mr. Green.
There we go. We're breaking down silos here.
Yes, sir. Okay, so my, uh, my name is Kevin Valbrecht. I'm the Director of the Engineering Services Department and I'm going to go through the Capital Improvements Plan uh, Program for next fiscal year. Uh, for today's agenda, we're going to talk about um, a recap of what we did in fiscal year twenty-two and uh, talk about what we're planning on doing for next year and then of course, uh, what's going to take place uh, in our current plan uh, beyond fiscal twenty-three. So first of all, let's talk about what money we had allocated in fiscal twenty-two. We had a total of about two hundred and fifty-six million dollars uh, in the budget uh, that was adopted for fiscal twenty-two and the breakdown of that was uh, there was four-point-nine million dollars of gas tax. In our capital acquisition fund, which is Fund Three-O-four, there was a ten-point-eight million dollars uh, allocated there. The Public Works Bond had five-point-four million dollars, that was out of our original uh, thirty million. The Public Utilities Bond had forty-seven million dollars, which was out of, of an original seventy-five million. And then Public Utilities puts in a renewal and replacement funds for water sewer and sanitary, or water, water sewer and storm drain work, which is a total of about forty-seven million dollars last year. Uh, fire assessment fee, the one-point-two million dollars was strictly for the capital uh, expenses that were in the budget and that was primarily as uh, as uh, Mr. Roberts stated earlier, was for replacing doors and windows and there was also about one-point-one million dollars uh, towards re-roofing Fire Stations Two and Seven. And then the Parks Bond, which was originally thirty million dollars, that had twenty-eight-point-two million dollars and that's a very active program. Sales tax program, uh, that, that program is a sixty-million-dollar, ten-year program and last year we allotted, uh, had allotted thirty-five-point-one million dollars. We've collected somewhere around forty-five million dollars in sales tax since that program began and we have encumbered or spent about ten million of that. Um, and then the CRA Bond, which was originally about seventy million dollars, there's thirty-one-point-one million dollars out, allotted last year. And then in Grants, we had a really good number here, we had twenty-seven-point-six million dollars in Grants that were allocated last year and that was um, predominantly Curry Park uh, had about almost eighteen million dollars in Grants uh, associated with that. And then we had another uh, three-point-six million dollars in FD, the, uh, mostly from FDEO, uh, Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. We also had a, a three-point-six million dollar grant from Florida Department of Equal Opportunity for hardening Fire Stations Number Five and Number Six. And then uh, we had um, about five-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars from FDOT for Roosevelt Estates and another five-hundred-and-ninety million dollars towards Northmore Elementary uh, Neighborhood from FDOT. And then we have about one-point-seven million dollars for Clear Lake Trail, which was made up of uh, one-point-one in FDOT money and uh, six-hundred-thousand dollars in CDBG money. That's predominantly what the, what the twenty-seven-point-six was made up of, so.
Quick question before we go on, uh, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand the sales tax. You said we've already used ten million of it and so would that, does that mean that we're at forty-five million of our sixty-million cap?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
And we're continuing, we originally anticipated and uh, programmed that, that we would collect six million dollars a year for ten years, but we've exceeded that in almost every single year. In fact, this, um, I'll get to that next, or, or shortly, about how much we're uh, collecting this year.
What year are we in?
We are in year, it started in twenty seventeen. Okay, so for fiscal twenty-two, uh, we completed thirty-two projects that were worth about twenty-nine million dollars and I will list those projects here and I've broken them down by Commission District. And you can see that we've done thirteen different projects in Commission District One. I don't need to really read through them all unless you want me to.
No.
Um, and in Commission, Commission District Three, uh, we've completed uh, seven, uh, these are, these are either complete or I expect them to be complete by September thirtieth. And so uh, there's been a number of things that we were able to get done this year as well, uh, is out in Commission District Four, two projects, uh, in Commission District Five, we had nine, and then we had one citywide project that we completed that makes up the thirty-two for twenty-nine million dollars. Incoming revenue for fiscal twenty-three, a total of twelve-point-five million dollars, of which nine-point-four million dollars will, will be what we take in for our sales tax revenue, so we expected six million dollars a year, we're taking in three-point-four million this year, more than what we originally anticipated. So we'll reach the sixty-million-dollar threshold on that, probably a little over a year ahead of schedule. And all of the projects have been programmed uh, towards um, getting all that money and, and projects completed uh, hopefully by the end of fiscal twenty-six. The gas tax fund, we have about two-point-one million dollars in new revenue that is being allotted towards capital projects, primarily roadway improvements. And then the general fund is going to kick in a million dollars for roadway resurfacing this year, which, thank you very much. We have plenty of paving and roadway servicing needs and so uh, that, that money will be put to very good use. So next year, fiscal twenty-three, we anticipate that we're going to complete forty-two projects uh, worth about seventy-two-point-six million dollars and those projects are going to be, uh, we still, we expect to finish uh, one of our next phases, the Title Vals, these are, these are the ones that are up um, along Fourteenth and Fifteenth Street, just north of um, Good Samaritan Hospital. We have some sanitary uh, replacements in uh, Pinewood Avenue. Uh, we're doing some water main replacements out of North Shore Drive, uh, work at Fogelman Park, uh, Forty-Eighth Street Utility Improvements, uh, Northwood Hills Utility Improvements and then uh, some storm sewer rehabilitation also on Pinewood Avenue. We're also going to complete the Outlet Mall Stormwater Repairs. We plan on doing some Village Boulevard paving next year. Uh, we're going to pave the areas that are the worst. Uh, we have a, a, a longer-term plan for Village Boulevard to do a more of a complete street, but we're going to pursue that, you know, down the Grant Avenue, but we recognize that we need to do something there soon and so we're going to put in about a million dollars towards Village Boulevard repaving, just to get that road back in shape so that we, it can last until we get our big project done in another.
Kevin, as soon as you can, can you distribute a timeline on that because I am and I'm sure other commissioners are getting bombarded with emails, so if we could at least respond with?
Village Boulevard?
Yeah, just on Village Boulevard.
I can tell you right now, um, I anticipate we'll start that project probably by, uh, maybe by October, November and it'll be done probably before the end of the year if everything goes well.
Okay, if you'll put that in writing.
I will.
And, and that way I can always.
How about by the end of January?
It won't be me saying it, it will, I will forward it to the complainers and it will be hearing it straight from your mouth and I would say between your mouth and God's ear, but I'm sure we'll get it done. Okay, but if you could just report that to us so we could start getting back to folks. I mean, it's great news. If we get that done by the end of the year, at least some significant uh, progress on that body near, that's wonderful news, but.
Okay. And then of course, we're doing some improvements on uh, three of the lift stations. I know that's not as, as exciting, but uh, they certainly are necessary. And then also uh, in Commission District Three, uh, we're going to finish up this section of Banyan uh, by November. Um, doing work in Roosevelt Estates, another strategic priority. Uh, we are, uh, we've finished up the um, the re-grading of the swales along Seventh Street. We're putting in um, some additional storm drain piping along Seventh Street as well as lining the sanitary sewer on Seventh Street and we will eventually uh, be able to get started and finish up the um, the FDOT grant project that we had to do these other utility work before. that we had to do these other utility work beforehand. And so there's gonna be a lot of stuff going on in Roosevelt Estates, as there has been for the last several months.
Question from President Fox.
Thank you, Kevin, so much, that is amazing news, but I don't think that that is the completion of all the work, is that correct? Are we still waiting for a grant opportunity?
No, this is only the work that's related to the 7th Street rebuilding. And so there's another, whole other sections of the neighborhood that we're still working on, what it is we need to do. We did the drainage study, that is almost complete now, and the recommendations being made of what other infrastructure work that we need to do there. We're gonna need to do some drainage, we may need to do some other utility relocations or replacements, as well as a lot of surface work, particularly in that northeast section between 8th Street and 11th Street, just west of Australian and east of Gulf Avenue. So that's definitely on our radar, that's our next priority to look at. And of course, finding funding to be able to do all that work is gonna be our next challenge, but that's definitely on the radar to work on.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
And then we're gonna be doing some new lighting improvements on Douglas Avenue, starting sometime soon, all the way from 2nd to 10th Street. We've got some parks projects, waterfront, playground, and the Clear Lake Trail, that should finish up by late next year as well. And over in Commission District 4, we're gonna redo the lighting in Lincoln Park. We've gotta do some work out at the Grassy Waters Nature Preserve, as well as some lift station and Apahy Park resurfacing.
Mr. Valbrecht, before you go away, and this is for the public, explain what lift stations are, and why they are, why it's important to keep those up today.
So lift stations, the city is not like all on a steady slope of, so everything can drain from A to B. So where there's a difference in the elevation where water or sewer, sewer or storm drains does not flow downhill as it should, it needs to go into a facility, which is basically a big pumping station. And it goes into that, the pumps push it into the next section of pipe, and that carries it forward to wherever the next lift station's gonna be so that we can eventually get it to either the ECR, which is the Sanitary Sewer Treatment Plant, or to the Lake Worth Lagoon where it eventually drains to. And so lift stations are very, very important, particularly in Florida, because of the flatness of the state, that we need to be able to pump some of the drainage and the sanitary sewer flows so that they get to point B efficiently and effectively. So that's what lift stations are for. And they do need maintenance, and they do need repairs, and they need to be paid very close attention to, because if one of them goes down, it's a big problem, and it creates a lot of work for everybody. And so we're trying to make sure we get a little bit ahead of that and do some improvements on these so that we're not gonna have problems with them as a surprise.
Thank you.
Okay. Commission District 5 next year, a big project, we're gonna repave South Flagler, south of Southern. Our first phase of that is gonna be basically from Worth Court North down to Suma Street. We're waiting for FDOT to finish up, they've gotta do some work on Flagler from their bridge project that they're finishing up. And then we'll come back later and finish up that northern section between Worth Court North and Flagler. And south of Suma Street to Gregory, we've got some further utility assessments that we need to perform, to make sure we don't have to replace any pipes or anything there, such that we'd have to tear the road up, and so we don't wanna do that. We did a complete utility condition assessment on that section north of Suma, and found that we don't have any dire needs of having to replace any kind of storm drain pipes or anything like that. We do have to do some work in the sanitary line, but that will all be accessed through the manholes, so it won't involve tearing up the street to put in new pipes. There is a couple of locations where, at Edmore and at Bloomfield, where we've got some tidal valve work to do that is going to involve adding new drainage structures and piping in the intersections. And so we're gonna hold off on those two locations until we get that tidal valve work done, which is also planned to be finished by the end of next year. And then we'll come back, and if there's paving that needs to be done there, we'll do that at a later point. But we're gonna do, you know, a very large percentage of the paving on South Flagler. Hopefully, we'll get that done also by the very beginning of next year.
If you could also give us a timeline on that one.
Okay, I'll do.
That's something we also are hearing a lot of complaints about, that would be very helpful, please.
Okay. I won't say it right now, I'll send it to you.
No, that's fine, you know, take your time.
They're both, they're both very close to starting, and so I just wanna, you know...
Let's under-promise and over-perform, so whatever, whatever that timeline is, let's, hopefully it's something we can stick to so we can communicate to the residents.
Okay. And then, of course, working at South Alder Park, putting a new playground in. We've got some other utility work that's going on, George Petty Park Playground. Once we get finished out there, what we're doing on the Washington Road Project, we're planning on starting a project and finishing it out at Washington Road and Pine Terrace. That's gonna involve some utilities and repaving, and more lift station improvements. And then this tidal valves Phase 2B is, there's seven tidal valves down, basically in the El Cid area, and we've got to put in those tidal valves. The Bloomfield is the one that is part of that project that we're gonna have to add in some new structures to, and some piping, so that's gonna hold off the paving.
We have a couple of questions, President Fox and Commissioner Lambert.
Okay.
Commissioner Lambert, go first. Well, I was just, thanks so much, Kevin, for mentioning the tidal valves, both in District 1 and District 5. I'm just wondering how, is there a report about how they're doing, and I guess in the first phase? And is Phase 2 gonna be the end of it? I know that we're coming upon the king tide season, so I get a lot of questions about that as well.
So far, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, and they prevent the high tides from coming back up into the storm drains and out through the inlets and flooding the street. They're strictly for preventing the tidal flow into the storm drains. When it rains, the water has to flow out, and it has to prevent the water from coming in. So if we have a rain event, and we have a high tide event, there's gonna be some, a duration where there's gonna be water sitting until that can equalize, and such that it can flow back out again. But to keep the sunny day flooding from occurring, they are definitely doing what they're supposed to be doing. Now, this is not anywhere near the end of the program. These are Phase 2B, we still have, we have a total of 31 outfalls to do, and so there's probably still about 12 more to do after that. We have seven large diameter outfalls located all up and down the Lake Worth Lagoon coastline, which we are working on designing what we need to do for those. And we anticipate that that work's gonna probably get done maybe in about six months, and then we could put that out to bid and do those pipe, those outfalls as well. And then there's a number of other smaller diameter outfalls that we'll put into a program to get those outfalls done. We're programming about another $750,000 for next year. We're also going after a grant for another $750,000 so we can work on these large outfalls, once we get that design completed. And so it'll be a yearly program until we get finished with that. I anticipate it's probably gonna take another two or three years before we're done.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. When, I know that the king tides happen sporadically, but is there, there's a season for them?
Generally, they're in October, and they're like in March.
Okay, so just given that we'll probably be seeing some in the next few months, is it possible to get a, just a brief update on where we are so that we're getting ahead of the complaints and the issues so that we can educate our residents of what we are doing towards this, and to let them know the progress that we've made?
Sure.
Super. And then my other question was, I'd love to have, you know, an hour meeting to kinda go into the details of these a little bit more, if we could, offline.
Okay.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
You mean a 101? Okay, alright. Any other questions? Okay, continue.
Okay, and then citywide, we're planning on completing a smart irrigation project, which is monitoring all of the irrigation in all the parks such that they can optimize the water usage and save money on water bills. And then we're doing our last phase of school zone upgrades, which involves flashing signs, pavement markings, that are all mandated by Florida statutes that we need to get completed, and we're ahead of schedule on doing that. And so that last phase of that is gonna happen this year as well. And then Parks is doing some Flagler Trail repairs.
Commissioner Lambert has a question.
I'm excited to hear about the smart irrigation, 'cause I walk in our parks usually in the mornings and the evenings and see a lot of, see some issues. Will that smart irrigation also tell us when the sprinkler heads are broken, and geysers are coming out of water?
Well, my understanding is, is it does, you know, basically there's a digital media that will tell you where the flows are taking place and things like that. So if you see some sort of an anomaly on that, you would know that there's a lot more flow going someplace that there's not supposed to be. And so I wanna say yes, but I'm gonna defer that to our Parks Maintenance Person to confirm that for me.
Okay, if it could be included, I think that that would be great. I mean, I report them quite often, and they're always different sprinkler heads. So I don't know if it's our maintenance trucks, or if it's residents or guests who are driving over these sprinkler heads, but all of a sudden, there's just a lake of water, and it's a waste of water, and just would wanna make sure we get that fixed as quickly as possible. And then also, just wanna say thank you so much. I'm excited to see the school zone upgrades moving along, and that's citywide, so, thank you.
Okay. So also, there's a number of projects that are in the CIP program that are gonna take place after next year. They're programmed to either start, or they won't be finishing until sometime after fiscal 23. And those total right now in our current funded budget, the $256 million of $154 million. There's 116 of those. I've listed here some of the significant ones. Curry Park is a $25.8 million project. We've got the Gaines Park Community Center, which we hope to go out to bid and start working on next year, but it'll finish after 23. $7.1 million. We've got $5.4 million in Parker Avenue improvements, and that goes all the way from Forest Hill up to Nottingham Boulevard. And we're working on the design with that with FDOT. We do have our Broadway program that goes from 25th to 45th. We're still working through all the details with FDOT on that. That's about a $5.2 million of sales tax money towards that. 26th Street Stormwater Rehabilitation, that's gonna be about a $5.1 million project that we hope to get started next year, and hopefully finish the following year. Howard Park Community Center, that's a $4.8 million project. We've got a bunch of drainage improvements to do in the Pineapple Park Neighborhood. Flamingo Park Neighborhood Improvements, there's about $3 million worth of work there that we've been working out with the Flamingo Park Neighborhood Association. It's gonna predominantly be improvements on Lake Avenue and Flamingo Drive. And then the Northmore Elementary Neighborhood, adding sidewalks and repaving streets, that also has some grant money associated with it. That's about a $1.9 million budget. And then the Northwood Hills Utility Improvements, which is a $1.8 million project that we need to get done before we start that Northmore Elementary Neighborhood. So these are just some of the larger number of projects that are making up that $154 million that are gonna occur after fiscal 23, that are in our current CIP program. There's also some other unfunded projects that have been identified that we're gonna need to eventually find money for. Number one is seawall repairs and upgrades. We've got some traffic calming that we need to do in the North Shore Neighborhood. We think that's gonna be about 400 grand. Some police bomb response vehicles, incident command vehicles, the Brandywine Drive repaving, carpet replacements in the library, painting here at the city center, some upgrades to the Police Department and the fire station, hopefully, potentially maybe even a new building altogether. And then there's a number of upgrades that we need to do at the city complex because there's, that's in a state of disrepair to a certain extent that needs to get repaired and taken care of, and we need to identify funding for that. Of course, the potential sources for that, we can allot some of the gas tax monies towards some of these, and then going after different federal or state grants that may become available. And so...
Before you go on, President Fox has a question.
Thank you so much. I just was curious about the seawall repairs and upgrades. Have we identified what those repairs need to be? I know they're probably more extensive than I...
We have identified, we did a condition assessment on the seawall about four years ago, and we have identified the worst areas of that. We do have a Florida Resilient Grant, $5 million towards doing that, of which we have to pay $2.5 million of matching money towards that. And we're working on putting that together so that we could start working on that. The overall program could be $60 million. Okay, but we're still trying to figure out what we're gonna actually do with that, with all the seawalls and what needs to be done, and as the funding becomes available for that, we will work on that. But I don't think we're in any dire straits of, we're ready to flood over at the very moment, but we're working on trying to get all ahead of that, okay?
And that's why we've hired a grants program strategist to try to identify sources of funds for those and other projects.
Correct.
Ms. Johnson, and then Commissioner.
I want to just add a footnote in terms of the potential sources. On the one-time funding plan that we have been working on, the board is gonna hear a proposal that will include some of those items, depending on their eligibility. So you will hear some of the items included in the presentation that will be made on Wednesday. The second phase of the one-time funding plan will be presented to the board once we get into fiscal year 23, because that portion of the plan is going to be predicated on the sale revenue that we get from 8111, and then the revenue that we're getting from TDRs and some other revenue from sale of city-owned property. And it will include some of those items as well.
Very good. Commissioner Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. Brandywine Drive is a very heavily trafficked road as well. Do we have an idea of the anticipated cost for that repaving?
Yes, we actually got a price for that. It's in a range of about $750,000 to repave that road.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. How did these unfunded CIP projects get identified? And just remind me of the process and how they ended up on the list as unfunded?
Well, various departments request these, and we obviously acknowledge the fact that they're asking for these, but they hadn't been previously funded under the current CIP program that has, that has the $256 million, and so they're new requests, and we need to look and see what we can do to be able to find funding to be able to move forward with any of these. And so that's how they really come about.
Let me just add a footnote to that. To a large degree, as part of the budget process, departments have to submit their operating budget, and then we have a component that is budget issues. And that's where you see a number of these items being requested. The challenge with considering them as part of the budget process is that procedurally, we don't fund capital projects out of our general fund operating budget. So we have this running list of projects that have been submitted as budget issues, and some of them are continuing submittals that have gone back years. We have some legacy issues in terms of projects having been submitted, funding not having been identified. We don't have a practice of including it in the general fund operating budget, so that list just grows and grows. What the board is going to see when we get to perhaps Phase 2 of the... of the one-time funding capital plan is that it will address a number of the budget issues or capital requests that have been submitted annually from departments.
And so I just also wanted to mention, you know, obviously, we've got a lot of things that we're trying to take care of. You know, we've got $256 million of work to do or we're partially done so far. And, you know, there's a number of needs and needs keep coming up and we have to stay on top of that and be able to plan accordingly because, you know, it's, there's, it's really not an end in sight for things that need to get done. But we're certainly doing a lot in the city to try to make improvements that are necessary. And, you know, some of the challenges that we're facing, you know, in today's environment is, you know, we've got the supply chain issues, the cost of materials. It takes a while for us to be able to get materials sometimes. It takes a long time to get like pipe. Concrete is a real big constraint on it, as well as labor market shortages. Some of the timeframes to be able to get through all the procurement process can be a little bit lengthy. And then, of course, you know, we need to identify if we're going to get grants. You know, we have to have the matching funds to be able to move forward with those. But the opportunities that we have available to us are also good in that there are grants available to help us pay for some of this stuff, as well as we're working on developing some master plans to identify projects that we may want to pursue. Like we're putting together a mobility plan. We're going to revise and revisit the whole bicycle master plan. And then we also work with utilities to coordinate such that if they have some utility needs in the street and we want to do something on the surface, that we coordinate that so that we do them together and take care of what's underground versus what's on top of the ground together so that we don't have to tear something up later and, you know, that we spend a lot of money on it. So we're working on that type of a synergy on a regular basis. So I just wanted to add that. And that's basically the end of my presentation. Is there any other further questions?
Couple more questions, President Fox and Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much. I wanted to ask a question about lighting. Did you just mention utilities? I know that many of the projects, if they're parks or other lighting projects that are specific to lighting, that they will obviously include the lighting. But what happens if somebody just wants a few extra lights? Is that also in the capital improvement projects budget or is there a different budget? I think probably it's one of the questions that we most get from people asking for a light or two and not, you know, a whole park of lights. But I'm curious what the process would be for that situation.
Well, if there is, if there is a request for lights, we will evaluate that and see if that's really necessary or not. And also, we do have probably, there's probably a couple million dollars in the budget that is for lighting improvements, and so that may be able to be utilized for that. We want to make sure that we follow our lighting study which identified the priority areas of the city where we want to make sure that we add lights where there aren't any or increase the number of lights where there's not enough in those priority areas. And so we'll take all of that into account and determine if we, if we can, need to move forward with adding a light or two in certain neighborhoods. Sometimes the, the, the maintenance budget can accommodate that. Like, you know, we just added a light on Greymon Street or something like that in the last month. And that was just picked up by the normal operating maintenance budget. But any types of requests like that, we would evaluate in the overall lighting priorities of the city and move forward accordingly or defer accordingly.
Let me just add a footnote because this, this has come up before and I want to make certain that we are clear and operating on the same page here. We don't have a process whereby residents can request, you know, one or two lighting to be installed. And I know that has come up in the past where as part of our budget process, they wanted to be able to submit, you know, a request to me or to finance, you know, where they needed one or two lights. We don't have such a process here at the city. So if there are lighting needs or requirements that come through the commission or comes through the staff, then it would be considered as part of that process. So I just want to make that clarification.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I had a similar question related to sidewalk repairs. I know that we had the ADA Sidewalk Repair Replacement Program listed earlier, but I presume that the other sidewalk repairs that are just needed throughout the city is not in CIP budget but in regular maintenance budget?
Well, actually, there's a few hundred thousand dollars that are in the budget for sidewalk repairs. We're hoping to be able to make that on a continual basis, you know, on a yearly basis where we, we put in four or $500,000 towards sidewalk repairs because there's a lot of sidewalks in the city that do need to be repaired. We're undertaking right now a $650,000 sidewalk repair project in the Saratoga neighborhood that is, it's already started and we anticipate that that's probably going to finish hopefully before the end of the year. And so that's a real big need and it's spread out all over the city. And we are diligently working towards being able to accommodate that, you know, as the funding is available and the resources are available to do so. So it is something that's actively being pursued.
Thank you. And I have seen barricades set up where sidewalks are broken. About how long can we expect from when that's, a broken sidewalk is reported, a barricade goes up to it being repaired?
That's, that really varies. I mean, you know, Public Works is doing everything they can to be able to, you know, to get to these areas. And again, there's a resource shortage and we're working on being able to get to everything that we need to get to. And, you know, the first step is obviously to put something up there that says, hey, there's a problem here. And I know that they've got a lot of work orders in place to be able to go out and get those fixed. Sometimes we may need to combine a number of those so that we can put a contract out to go fix them. But those are also being actively pursued and I know it looks like they might be a little bit dormant. But in our active efforts to try to get this taken care of, it's definitely not dormant, okay? They are being considered very diligently and actively being pursued to get those taken care of as quickly as we can.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And I just wanted to comment on your, on your last comment before you took questions and that we recognize the challenges of today's market and really appreciate the work that everybody's doing. And I have to say, I am really glad to see that the city is putting together even more data collection points so that we can prioritize projects based on the need and I, and make it transparent. I think that's very helpful in our decision-making process and also to know where to allocate more funding if needed. So thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Valberg? I don't have anything on the mayor's matters. Commissioners, you have anything for the good of the order? Okay, hearing none. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.